Good afternoon, welcome everyone to the January 18th, 2023 meeting of the Morphersboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum present today. First item of business is our consent agenda, which we've all seen and had the chance to review before the meeting. So if anybody had any of those items they would like removed for further consideration, or if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda. So moved?
Motion in a second.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our first item, we have old business today. We have a zoning application for approximately 10.1 acres located at 694 and 708 West Thompson Lane to be rezoned from RS 15 to PRD Cherry Blossom Downs. BA Homes LLC is the applicant. Good afternoon, Ms. Green, how are you?
Good afternoon, I'm well, thank you. I hope everybody is doing well in the planning commission as well. Our item of old business is for you to consider some proposed changes to a PRD Planned Residential District application that's located along West Thompson Lane. The property itself is currently zoned RS 15 and that single-family residential district allows 15,000 square foot lots. But you had submitted to the planning commission an application to change the zoning to PRD Planned Residential District, which essentially lets the applicants prepare a plan specific to the property and that program book becomes the zoning for the property. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 5th, 2022, of course it's 2023 now, but just a few months later. And at that planning commission, the planning commission deferred action on the application. And then staff noted what we believe were the three areas that were asked to be addressed. And I've just labeled them one, two, three here. The first was for there to be improved, stronger language in a pattern book regarding the preservation of the existing vegetation along the western property line. And that is the property line that's adjacent with the existing Tuscany PRD Planned Residential District, which is single-family lots. The second was to enhance side elevations for corner lots. And the third was additional elevations or more substantial variation in the elevation than what was proposed in the pattern book on the night of the public hearing, October 5th. And so those are the notes that we made after the meeting of areas to be addressed and shared that, of course, with the applicant who was there as well. And asked them to address those so that we could get that back before you. So I think maybe I'll just one, two, three, go through them, just like I mentioned. The first, of course, was for that improved, stronger language in the pattern book regarding the preservation of the existing vegetation along the western property line. And maybe you can see, here's the western property line. I think one of the areas of opportunity that we saw was these four houses in Tuscany, the front actually faces the side property line. And so that's a bit odd because fronts usually don't face property lines. And so staff had asked the applicant to look at ways to have some kind of landscaping there. We also were at the neighborhood meeting, I think the developer expressed a desire to have landscaping there as well because it would be a benefit for both sides. But ultimately, I think that staff, our understanding of the request and what the developers proposing aren't lining up. We believe that the plan as submitted is insufficient because the plan essentially says that they will replace trees that may be, that might die during construction. And something that's important is that the rear setback for these lots is 20 feet and likely there'll be a rear 20-foot drainage easement in the backyards. And so we know that in order to get water to the detention ponds, probably a pipe or a ditch or some way to convey water along the rear will be needed, which likely means a drainage easement will be needed. And their best practice is when there deals with construction tree preservation, trees don't always die immediately. Sometimes if you park heavy equipment on the root zone, it takes up to five years to die. And so we believe that the construction of the facilities that would go in that drainage easement would likely create a scenario where the trees that exist will not survive. And it's also likely that the property will transfer within that time. So a homeowner will own the property at that point and it won't be the developer. And so we'd like to propose different language that would speak to that. In the staff comments, we do have a, just a proposed paragraph. I don't think the developer is amenable to this paragraph, but we wanted to present options that maybe would be able to address both concerns because I know that they've expressed a desire to have landscaping and we know that the practicality of it has some complications. So we included the paragraph that I have on the screen before you and reached out to them and asked if they'd put it in the book and they were resistant to that. So that is one area that the planning commission should consider and give the developers some direction and feedback on what you'd like to see in that area. Another, or would you like me to move on to the buildings or did you have any questions about that at this time?
Would you all like to discuss each of these individually or do you want to let her give us the entire one, two, three presentation?
One, two, three.
Yeah, one, two, three, let's hear it.
Go on to the.
Go ahead, please, thank you.
Okay. And then the other two items are related to each other. They deal with architecture. The first was to create enhanced side elevations for those sides that actually aren't sides, they're fronts. When a lot is a corner lot, it's actually got two front property lines, a side and a rear. And so we're showing to you what the developer's proposing. The top image, which you can find in the program book, shows the enhanced side elevation. There's five lots that actually meet that criteria and the bottom is the typical elevation. So it looks like to me that the change is adding a different type of siding in the top portion of the building there. So that, or trim material in the gable. And so that's the second item. We would like you to decide whether it's sufficient or if you'd like to see it addressed in a different manner. And then the third item was additional elevations or more substantial variation in the elevations than what was proposed in the pattern book on 10-5, 2022. And so it was hard for me to identify really what changed in this book. I do know that the number of pages decreased and some of the buildings were all put on one page. So I asked the team, the design team, to just give us a bullet point list so that you can actually maybe just see what the changes are. And they gave us the changes for four types of buildings. They called them product C1, A1, B1, and D1. And I include those also in the staff report. And so if you, here, it's easier if I zoom in, or at least easier for me. And so you can see what they're proposing as the change is listed under each elevation. So here they're proposing to add a dormer, add shake to the right dormer, add shutters, and then have a three-column porch, add some shakes on the garage gable on the left side and cedar trim. On product A1, it's a semi-hip roof on the sides, add a trellis above the garage, a larger gable over the front with a small gable inside the larger gable, and then board and batten on the front gables. B1, I keep, sorry, I thought I did it pretty easy. Here we go. In the B1, they added a front single dormer on both units, a front wooden trellis to the right unit. Front has a tri, front gable, I'm not sure what that is. Right side has a gables and cedar shakes and left side, front gable has cedar shakes. And then on D1, they have triple dormers on the left side, front porch on the left side has three columns, board and batten on the left side, front gable, right side added a single dormer, single dormer added to the right side, hip roof, put the right side over the garage instead of the gables, and tall skinny gable with shake on the right. So that's the list that I got from them of the changes. Staff felt the changes were very nuanced and weren't really obvious changes. And so it wasn't clear to us that they incorporated the feedback that you made. However, I do know it's their desire to build mostly the same product or homes in this development. And so they wanted to move forward with the buildings as they submitted them. The staff did offer some suggestions, but I think they were really comfortable with what they had and really just wanted to move to you to have you opine upon the changes. So those are the three areas that we identified and shared with them. This, of course, this was a deferred application. So we would ask that you discuss the project and if you have any feedback, share that with them. And then if you're ready to formulate a recommendation to city council, it would be appropriate to do that today as well. And I believe they would like to speak to their changes as well.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and hear from the developer on the reason there's no changes to the changes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Rob Olton, SEC, I'm accompanied by Brian Burns, State of BA Homes. Regards to the three items that were brought up, the first, I guess, we'll start with the landscaping along the Tuscany boundary on that side. The reason there's really no change, I think we're still adhering to the same standard we started with from day one in regards to how we want to take care of maintaining this existing tree row along the Tuscany boundary and being able to go back and supplementally add in landscaping where there's already existing gaps and any gaps that may occur during the construction process with landscape materials so that we preserve not only what Tuscany has today in regards to their view looking across the detention pond. I will point out that when we did the design for Tuscany, the Tuscany pond has along the actual street that those houses front on, has landscaping elements all along that frontage. So there's shrubs, grasses, trees. So there's already somewhat of a semi-edge of landscape material that is new and growing at this point in time that, you know, more or less blocks the view from those homes into that detention pond, which then you have to look beyond that landscape, over the pond and through the existing tree row before we get to our project on that side. So there's almost two levels of landscape materials already installed on that side and that we're just asking that when we do our side, that anything that we have gap-wise that allows for anybody to see through from either side, we fill that in today. And if anything would happen during construction prior to certificate of occupancy is being released, to provide additional landscape material to fill those gaps in to continue to have that visual barrier between both developments so that those homes that do front across from Tuscany into the back of our development still have the same view that they have today on that side. So that's kind of where we're asking at this point in time on that side.
So can you just, can we find where you're, what does the wording say in the booklet as to what you're going to do with the landscaping?
Page, page 19, bullet number three.
Okay.
We originally had the first two sentences in there. We've added the remainder of this to say that a tree survey will be conducted on the existing tree preservation plan will be submitted with the construction plans. That way all existing trees will be accounted for and any existing trees damaged or destroyed will be remiated at that point in time. So, and we're also willing to make certain that there's any gaps currently based on the, any of the gaps that were created with Tuscany or just by natural time, that those gaps are filled in as well.
As a new development, are you, does the city, and this may be a question for staff, does not the city request or require a three-year maintenance bond for landscaping?
Correct. So you have a one-year performance bond and then a three-year maintenance bond at that point in time.
So if any of this died in this three-year period, you would be obligated to replace the items in question.
Correct.
Based upon that.
Yeah. If staff would go.
Let me go to that. That is typical for commercial projects or areas where you have required landscaping. At this point in the program book, there's no required landscaping between them, like there's no type buffer that's required or perimeter planting yard. And so I think we would want clarification from the planning commission on what you want to see here because as it stands, it's not identified as any required landscaping. We're saying that it makes sense maybe in some parts of it to require that. If that's the case, then we would have bonds and we would go through that process. But these are single-family homes, single-family attached homes. And generally, you know, when you build it and you sell it, that property transfers to whoever you sell it to and they own that. There's no landscape easement, there's no minimum required landscaping here as far as it's written now. And so that's why we're really wanting to get some clarity on it.
Well, I mean, I guess you could say the minimum is to replace the items in question at time of construction if they were, if they died. And then if there's not a requirement for a maintenance bond, I'm not sure why we couldn't require that.
So it may be that you want to say, because there's no items in question yet because we don't actually have anything that says what's there, what's not there. The commitment is just saying fill in gaps and it's kind of discretionary. So it may be that you want to identify, it needs to be like a type A buffer, which is our smallest buffer. We've been careful not to suggest very specific landscaping, but we just know that the way it operates, there's no require, there is no, I mean, sure, you can add that condition and that's what we're asking you to do today is talk about what to require. But between single and family and single-family generally on RS 15 lots or it wouldn't be required. And so we really need to drill down and what do you want to see? There's nothing yet, there's a commitment to do a tree survey, but really there's nothing yet that identifies what's there.
I think just to, just to supplement what Ms. Green said, I mean, we're trying to create a little bit more specificity. I think the standard that they, and I can appreciate what they're trying to do, but it's a little bit more ambiguous relative to our, to what we have in our zoning ordinance. And so what we're trying to, what we recommended was some very specific standards. One, a type A buffer along that property line because I think we as staff heard the concerns of the neighbors during the public hearing. And, you know, really looking at that transition, you know, because those four homes, it's their front doors that are going to be facing the back doors of these, you know, it'd be a detention pond, then it'll be the backyards and back doors of these, of these homes. And so what, we started talking internally about, you know, what can we do to, to provide a proper transition? And I think what we landed on was a type A buffer, you know, one, it's, there's a standard for a type A buffer. Our staff, when they're reviewing the landscape plan can say, can look at that tree survey and can compare it to our cross-section for a type A buffer and say, yeah, you need to supplement here, here, and here. And this is how you need to protect those existing trees. Also, there are specific bonding requirements for buffers that are different from bonding requirements for just regular perimeter landscaping. Also, what we had requested was to put that, you know, put that type A buffer in a landscape easement to be perpetually maintained by the homeowners association so that there would be a little bit more teeth to the perpetual maintenance and upkeep of that buffer. And so that was what we had suggested. The applicant and the design team did not agree with our suggestion and, and so, but we still feel strongly that there needs to be a proper transition and it needs to be crafted so that it's, so that it's relatively easy to, or easier to administer by us to make sure that it's, that it provides that protection.
And can I ask, did you all feel a type A was sufficient for this type of separation versus a B or was there?
I think that was a starting point. I think type A being the, being the least intense buffer was a starting point. And from that point, if we had the other language in there, the landscape easement, the shorties that we would get with a, with an official buffer, I mean, we would leave it to, or we would, we would ask for what the, you know, planning commission's opinions are and what the specific type of buffer would be that y'all would feel would be appropriate.
I would definitely think we need a buffer and I would have to have a slight review of A versus B to know where I wanted to, or we could go all the way to D, I mean, you know.
The reason I didn't agree to this is, there's two reasons. It just got brought up to us two hours before.
Mr. Burns, hello.
Sorry. Brian Burns with BA Homes.
Thank you so much.
It wasn't, this got brought up to, type A buffer has never been brought up to us till two hours before this meeting, two or three hours before this meeting. It's never been once said by anybody. And the reason I don't want big buffers is because they eat into the yards. So we're building these homes for people that are putting in wrought iron fence, or aluminum fences so people have a nice backyard for the dogs, back porches and everything. When you start putting these buffers in, they eat into the people's yards. It's not that it's a big expense to us, but it's, it is an expense. When I first brought this project to the, the planning department, I, it was actually, Matthew here, said we didn't need any buffer through here. And we're the ones that agreed to actually put in, to add stuff to it because we wanted to add things to it and make it a more complete buffer. I just didn't want to put in, I didn't want to have a buffer that's required through there. I'd rather just use our discretion and, and put it in as it's needed. I don't, we're not going to be cheap on doing it. If it needs it, we're going to put it in. But to run it all the way down through there just with the tree line and everything that's there just seems like a waste of money. That's, that's where I was coming through with it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
And just to clarify something, it was in the staff comments that went to, that went out and was published on Friday. So it was more than just two hours ago.
Okay. Comments before we move on to the next item? Because we got three to really drill down on.
I think the next one was the enhanced side elevations. Let me see if I can get that pulled up here. As you can see, the top elevations like Margaret Ann spoke to have the enhanced side elevations for those that'll be facing any, any public right of way. The bottom is your typical side elevation, which would be elevations that sit next to each other. So more or less it's that dead space between units. So what we did on the end of units there is Mr. Burns has gone through with this architectural staff and we've added a, more or less a second level to those, to add in some architectural character to that elevation versus what you see on the lower portion, which is nothing more than, you know, just a straight-faced wall. He's gone through and had some, you know, some gable elements and stuff, some differentiation materials to help kind of add that, added an extra window in the upper, in that upper portion of the gable to give that elevation, that front side, a little more character than what a typical side would be with the between units on that. So I think he's done a good job of doing something to make it look different and actually feel better when it's along a streetscape.
Comments or questions regarding the, may I see a window that was added and the siding that was added to the upper level? Looked like some shutters or some, you know, there'd be something. But, go on.
And also there's differentiation between the first and the second story in that gable is you've got a little eyebrow of shingles in there to add that extra, you know, like, kind of like that gable and look on that side.
Questions before we go on to number three? Okay.
The next is, of course, the, what Margaret Ann talked about in regards to going through all the different architectural elevations. Now, Mr. Burns has, you know, more or less it's the same footprint as we've brought forth since day one and it'll be all across every one of these units on this side. But Mr. Burns has gone through an extensive period of redesign with this since the first meeting and the, and the public hearing back in October to more or less show you all the variations in your book. So if you look through all the pages besides what you see on the screen today, when you look at page.
You want to go to it? It's in here. Yeah. Which page did you want?
Perfect, I'll work right there. So as you can see, what we've done here is, and we talked to me and Margaret Ann brought up, we've reduced the number of pages in the book. Mr. Burns asked us to do with this book is to more or less show you what each of the four different varying styles of the elevations would look like. So as you see here, this is the front elevation and he's got product A1, B1, C1, and D1. You can see it's the same more or less footprint, but what he's gone through is he's done all the elevational changes he can to make varying looks to this footprint on that side. So as you can see, if you look between each one of those, so that we did this to say, you can look and see all four elevation types that will be used along that streetscape to show the varying styles and character of that elevation. Even though the footprint of the building itself is the same, the streetscape's going to look completely different because each home has its own varying style between those four different variations that you see up on there. So you can see he's added a bunch of different, you know, dormers, he's added some, you know, varying types of gables and other pitches and other stuff like that, added some different element, you know, treatments in regards to lighting and trellises. So he's gone through on each of these to kind of give you the best interpretation of here's four varying styles of how these houses look like, even though the footprint's the same across the streetscape. So this is really what he wanted to do on that side. And then looking at next page, got on there, again, this is some more, another elevation change. So you can see the varying between the colors, the styles, the materials that are used. It may be the same footprint, but he's got at least four or more types of elevations he can promote across that streetscape to make certain it doesn't look like the exact same footprint that you see in some of the other subdivisions in the community. And this is the side and rear, I mean, that's the side you see there, that's the rear. You can see the covered porches on the backside. These will be actually underneath the actual main structure roof of the house itself will be the covered porches. So that's what Mr. Burns spent a lot of time and effort on in trying to come through with being able to promote a varying style of architecture for this project, even though it's the same footprint.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Green, I have another question, please. Yes, ma'am. And I probably missed this at the beginning of your presentation, but I believe that I read that the, it doesn't fit, the project itself doesn't fit in the 2035 master plan either as it is or the proposed changes to the master plan. Was that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And when the applicant initially reached out as a public inquiry, we did share with them that the project isn't compatible with either the existing future land use map that we have adopted, that KKC prepared, or the proposed amendments, which are not adopted. In either case, this is inconsistent, the type of use, and I can tell you the reasons why. The type of use is inconsistent, so the, the use that's identified in the plans calls for a single-family detached residential use and proposes a single-family attached, zero lot lines. I think sometimes you might have heard duplex, but this is a little bit different because it's a single-family attached. It doesn't have the, it doesn't, the number of units exceeds what both future land use maps propose, so the use, the number of units. And the transitions for unit height and setback aren't being provided in this development. And so for those reasons, it's not consistent with the future land use maps.
I'm just going to say that in general, I think, you know, pretty much from the first time we looked at this project, we did see a lot of changes and things that we would like to have seen. I personally do not feel I've seen very many changes at all in this plan since the first time we saw it, which I guess this is probably the third time we're, we're looking at it. You know, Mr. Burns, I think you have built some of the nicest projects that we have in town, some that you're very proud of and I'm proud to say that, you know, yes, that's, that's right here in our town. They have character and just a lot of great things I can say about a lot of projects that you've done. I cannot say that about this project at all. I don't feel like it, I don't think it looks like projects that you do. I wouldn't drive down this street and say, oh, this, this must be a Brian Burns development. You know, his always look great, they always have great character. I don't feel like that at all. Now, I'm speaking for myself and I realize there's a lot of other people sitting up here, but, you know, so we'll hear from them too. But I don't feel like there was, even though you told us you're working with us and making the changes, I don't see that that happened. So that was, that's my thought. I'm not pleased with the project as it is. I don't think that I could vote for it like it is. And so you've probably got some other people up here to talk to to get your project passed today.
I'll make a comment. So I don't have the same issues that Kathy or Ms. Jones has. I think the project looks good. Knowing the past experience with Mr. Burns and the projects he's done, as Ms. Jones mentioned, I think he's going to want to have a quality product in the end. I don't. I don't really have issues with the changes he's made on two and three. I'm okay with. I think that the staff has issues still, well, they probably have issues with two and three, but they definitely still have issues with the landscape piece. I think that, you know, if this stayed RS-15, we wouldn't even be having this conversation because you would not be required to have a buffer between the two different RS-15 developments, unless I'm wrong on that.
That's true.
And so, but I think it's important to the neighbors that spoke that we at least look at a Type A buffer so that the city has the ability to have the easement as they spoke of, that they have, where they can bond it and monitor it in a, in a better fashion. So that's, that's what I would propose, but I'm not going to make a motion until we hear from everybody else.
Any other comments or thoughts?
So, go ahead.
If, if you guys think a buffer is what we need there, that's what we'll put there then. We'll do the Type A buffer.
I think that's my only request at this time as well, is the buffer.
So I guess from my point of view, I think clearly one of the things was the buffer. We need to address that issue, whether it's a Type A buffer or some concrete wording that makes sure that we have control over what's going between them, and then we have some regulation going between it. So Type A will do it, so he's agreed to it. That's one. I think the side elevations do need, the ones that are prominent to the street do need shutters. That would be similarly to the front, to give it a little bit more character than it is. I'm probably okay with the, the front elevations, the way they look, but what I will say is this, I mean, the, the challenge is we've requested a lot more, a lot, a lot of difference in the elevations. And the reality is, is what's here is the same look, and that's where we're having more consummation, is, is it's the same look as it was before. And that's where Kathy is saying that, you know, we'd like to see some variation in that look, whether it's breaking one side or, I mean, something that makes it different. And that's on the front elevations. Those were my comments, was definitely the buffer definitely needs some shutters or something else to add more character on the sides that are prominent to the streets. And then the front elevation, if we could get some type of differentiation, differentiation on the look, because right now it still looks exactly like what we saw before.
I would echo those comments. The, the line that keeps coming back to me is the, is that there's just one footprint and elevation for this project, and that, that gives me a little heartburn. So I would also like to see some different variation in the look. I feel like, you know, when we see this project as it is right now, it would, you look down the street, it's going to look exactly the same down the entire street. And that's, that's the last thing that I would personally would like to see. I don't have much input on the buffer. If we're going to do a Type A, that's great. But the, the one footprint for the entire neighborhood gives me some heartburn. That's all I would say.
I don't think the, I mean, I've lived in a lot of townhome communities and driven through a lot of communities where the elevations are a lot more similar than these four, so.
That's similar to what I was going to say. I mean, you can drive through General's Landing, drive through any of the old south townhome complexes, they're all identical from the outside. I mean, I drive through these developments every day, so a lot of these attached developments, they do look the same on every building, maybe with minor variations, just like he's got minor variations. So I, I guess if we were going to do lots of variations, I guess we should have done variations on General's Landing too, because they all look the same too, and they're right next door. So these are all, it, it's kind of flows with everything else. It's right there.
We, we really tried to change these elevations around, and I, I guess maybe I'm just looking at them differently. I guess different eyes look at things differently. If you look at A1, that's, that's a gable going all the way across there, and it's covering a two. And then if you go down to the one below it, you've got two separate units with two different gables and a front porch. And if you go like to, to D1 over here, I've got a hip roof on the front of the right one there. I don't know that I can change these without making them, to keep them in a section of just two units. I don't know, I've got four, when you get these four buildings built, they were going to look like four distinctly different buildings, and then I've got four different colors you can put with it. So if you take the four colors and the four buildings, you've got 16 different units and never having anything that looks alike over there. These have a lot of, and I don't know, maybe my eyes are looking at it differently because I've stared at them for so long. These have got a lot of different changes in them. As far as having the footprints, if, these are the same two footprints in a building over 300 of over in Hidden Rivers. We changed these to make them look more craftsman because the townhome project beside us has a craftsman feel to it, and then Tuscany has a craftsman feel to it, so we tried to make these more craftsman instead of, I guess with a modern flair like we're doing in Hidden Rivers. So I wasn't trying to opt, I, I thought I was giving you guys what you, you wanted here, at least that was my intentions. We only have two units, so you take two one-story units, you're just kind of limited on how many different elevations you can come up with. And I'm trying to keep everything where there's no stairs, these are all one, one level units, so. My goal is to make it look good, and I do feel I build nice projects in town, and I've, I've done Billborough, which I know a lot of you guys have given me compliments on. That's one unit. That's one, that's one unit looking the same all the way across there. This is, I feel this is four different units, and I feel it'll look really nice when it's done. I won't build it if it doesn't look nice. I don't, I like to be able to come up here and, and say I build nice stuff, and I like the fact to hear you guys think that I build nice stuff, so. I don't have a different philosophy on this. My goal is to make it look nice and something you guys can be proud of.
I like it. I think it looks good.
All right. Any other comments?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion. We approve with the following changes. You agree to a Type A buffer. You put the, what am I trying to say?
Shutters.
Shutters on the side, elevations that, that you have got in the pattern book. And that's it.
So the side elevations that face the road.
Yes, thank you.
Could I get some clarification on that buffer? Our, our ask would be that, that buffer be located in an easement to be maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners association and that there be a three-year maintenance bond included as well.
I would include that in my motion. Thank you, Matthew.
Matthew, does that buffer need to be subject to the requirements of Section 27 of zoning ordinance?
Yes. That too.
Is the developer willing to do the three-year bond?
I don't have a problem doing the bond. It's, I think that's whatever's required for every other buffer we've, we've ever done. I don't have a problem with it.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye or nay, or whatever you say. I hope it's a beautiful project, but sorry I couldn't support it. All right. Next, we are moving on to Section 5, our GDO items. First thing we have is Fountains at Gateway, Lot 1. Final plat for one lot on 5.1 acres, zoned MU and GDO 3, located along Medical Center Parkway, City of Murfreesboro, developer. All right. Ms. Aguilera, welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission. This item that we have on the agenda for the GDO portion is a final plat, Fountains at the Gateway, Lot 1. The property is zoned MU and GDO 3. Of course, this is why we are bringing it to you all today, requires Planning Commission review and approval. The purpose of this plat is to create one lot of record and record easements, as shown as is depicted on screen. As you know, the Fountains is proposed to be in certain phases, so as this is zoned on, as this is the city's property, they're getting, getting ready for that preparation of Phase 2. So the developer has submitted, we have submitted plans for this, the plat for this to be recorded in preparation for that. The statutory review of this lot and working with Hudson Steel Engineering, we determined that there to be no major concerns with this plat and that, that with the review of this, that you approve this subject to all, all staff comments. I'm available for any questions you may have, or the questions about the lot. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions regarding this plat, the Fountains at Gateway, Lot 1?
There are none. I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is Meadowlark. Final design and site plan review of 77 townhouse dwellings and 27 single-family detached dwellings on 10.8 acres, zoned PRD, GDO 1 and GDO 2, along Willow Oak Trail and Wilkinson Pike. Toll Southeast LP Company, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. Our next item under the Gateway Design portion of our agenda is for you to consider final design and site plan approval for a project that's referred to as Meadowlark. Meadowlark is the new name for a project that the zoning application was Toll Brothers at the Gateway or Gateway at Toll Brothers, which is a residential development that has single-family detached and single-family attached homes. As I mentioned, this is final design review, and so you did review the architecture last month and give some feedback to the applicant. I think the feedback that we noted was that what was submitted was consistent with the expectations set forth in the zoning book and the PRD, and there were several material boards that we shared with you that showed various pallets that would all fall within that same pallet. This project has 77 townhomes and 27 single-family detached dwellings. It has Wilkinson Pike along the north, and the phasing of this project starts from the north and goes south, so Wilkinson Pike is the first phase. Currently, there are construction plans approved for the extension of Willow Oak Trail, which is along the south of the property. That right-of-way is not dedicated or constructed yet, however, it's part of the development plans for Clary Park, which is underway with Heinz Construction. The dwellings or the part of this plan that is Phase 2 is what fronts along Meadow, or fronts along Willow Oak Trail. And some of the staff comments that we shared were, of course, that the right-of-way needs to be in place before Phase 2 moves forward, and we will work with our permitting process and hold those permits until it's in place. If something happens with Clary Park and something unforeseen and they can't build the road or don't build the road according to their commitment, this section would be in the responsibility of the developer, but everything in Clary Park is moving as expected. So I think I did mention that in 2022, 2022, the Toll Brothers did amend the zoning for this property. The Gateway Design Overlay District does not allow single-family detached as a use that's permitted, so any application that wants to do townhomes has to do a plan development. So that's what was the impetus for this project. The site plan is, today is being asked to be approved all at once, but Phase 2 of the architecture may need to come back. The zoning ordinance speaks about 100-foot buffer that's located along the south side of Willow Oak Trail, and that is part of, it's in the text of the GDO overlay. And so, much like the adjacent property that the owner, Tommy Smith, several years ago requested to amend that buffer, and then, of course, Clary Park came in with the same amendment, was to allow some development within that 100-foot buffer, actually within 20 feet. But that development proposed is the single-family detached, and they are also proposed to use the remaining 80 feet to be a landscaped area with a minimum five-foot-high berm planted with a mixture of evergreen trees and shrubs, along with canopy and under-story trees in that 80-foot setback. So although they are permitted to go 20 feet within that buffer, it's only with single-family, and they are now doing a berm. The berm is actually not required in the zoning ordinance, it's something that was committed to by the adjacent property, and they want to continue that along the property. In the plans, you'll see that each home will have foundation landscaping and sodded yards. All amenities and open space are required to be constructed with the phase that they're in. It must be operational prior to recording of the final sections plat, and I know that the Planning Commission has been interested to know the timing of amenities and make sure that they, those things that are promised to people who buy the homes are put in in a timely fashion, so that is consistent with the zoning of the property. Generally, a dumpster or compactor would be required with this development because it has 75 or more dwelling units. However, the PRD granted an exception, said they don't need to do a compactor, that they can utilize a private hauler and luer, that trash compactor. So the garage typicals that were submitted do show that they can park the vehicles as committed and store a cart inside the garage. These units are alley-loaded homes, so a lot of them front on parks or mews and are actually accessed through the rear. That will be where the solid waste is picked up, and so it's appropriate for them to have that storage in the garage. Regarding architecture, we shared that with you during last meeting. The townhome buildings are comprised of alternating unit styles and colors, so the same style and color are not next to each other. Each unit is offset by at least 24 inches, which is a significant offset. Roof lines are varied between each other with jogs in the building, and there's a minimum of a six-inch vertical step in the building. The first floor elevations are elevated at least 18 inches, which is, seems small, but it's critical in creating these type developments that, that follow kind of new urbanism principles. And the side, and the fronts have usable porches and stoops that are at least five feet by nine feet, and that's another suggestion of the gateway as well. The high-visibility homes are similar to the homes I think you just discussed in the previous project, and so in the zoning process, they identified the high-visibility homes so where the sides are, in this instance, they're not adjacent to public rights of way because these are private streets or private drives, but they are visible. So they made commitments to improving the high-visibility homes. Let's see, I lost my place. They have wrapped porches, full brick sides, extra windows, and architectural detailing in those. The high-visibility homes that face Clary Park have full brick sides, extra windows and details, and HVAC units have been identified on the plans on the rear of the building. The HVAC locations can become an opportunity to work with with townhomes. I know we've talked about that in the past because of the footprint of the buildings and trying to get water in, sewer in, electric in, landscaping in, and, and the HVAC units becomes a challenge, and it really requires a lot of planning on the front end, so we've asked them to look at that. Rear doors were added to the single-family homes, and they're being shown to you just to give you a concept of what's being proposed. Single-family homes are permitted different than townhomes because our process is set up differently. So when they come through, we'll have planning staff available to review the architecture of single-family homes and make sure that each building that's permitted does meet those standards. But it was discussed during the zoning about how emergency, emergency services would respond to these developments when they front on a park or a mu, and then the access through the alleys. And so they have, the single-family homes are wider than townhomes, so they were able to put a door in the back. And the townhomes, since they're newer, they have a numbering scheme, so it's clear which unit is the one that, it's clear which unit is addressed, however it's addressed, so that it can be responded to fairly quickly. As far as parking, access, and streetscape, the site is designed with a network of private streets and alleys. They have decorative streetlights along all streets to add character to the community. Wilkinson Pike entrance has a development sign on both sides of the entrance, and the Willow Oak Trail entrance has a development sign on one side of the entrance. The site complies with minimum parking in the PRD, so they have 54 driveway spaces, 54 garage spaces for the detached homes, and 154 garage spaces and 154 driveway spaces for the townhomes. The site also accommodates 60 guest spaces, and that's per the zoning as well. The site layout accommodates the required separation between the parking and the building, as well as between the parking and access, and so the GDO has a separation between buildings and parking, just to add to that high-quality design. Wilkinson Pike is a substandard road, and I know that anytime development even remotely close to Wilkinson Pike comes to us, we inquire about that. It is identified on the major transportation plan to be upgraded to three-lane roadway section, and it's a midterm improvement, so we identify it as MTI number six. The developer of this project is required to participate in those road improvements and according with our development regulations, and so what they are doing is adding a turn lane into the site on Wilkinson Pike and having that marry directly into the turn lane that's being put in for the Clary Park development. development, so they'll be uniform. And after those, those plans, it's my understanding, have been approved by our public infrastructure department. And so after the turn lanes are installed, the city will be repaving Wilkinson Pike. Let's see. So some elements of the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan that you might see install or that you would see installed on all streets within the gateway design overlay district are not being installed with this development along Wilkinson Pike because we know Wilkinson Pike has some plans to be rebuilt. The design of it's going to be differently. And so the city engineer has the flexibility to take fees in lieu of construction for some elements. We don't want them to put in street trees or sidewalks where they're going to be torn out and so they can, things that can't be put in now can be fees in lieu of for those elements. However, the south, the street to the south Willow Oak Trail is a new city street and this property will be responsible for extending irrigation to the back of the curb, so outside the property into the right-of-way, decorative streetlights in addition to any regular streetlights, street trees and sidewalks. And so those are the elements that will be installed by this developer. Let's see. The design team were able to address most of our comments prior to, or prior to coming to you. There was one comment that Mr. Blomley and I discussed and that was for the, the, sorry, pavilion with fireplace that's required in Phase One of this development. As you might remember, I mentioned that each amenity is required to be installed with that section or phase. And so this pavilion with the fireplace is required in section or Phase One because it's gateway, the architecture of, of principal structures and accessory structures are required to go to the planning commission for review. And so what was submitted initially was more illustrative in nature and really didn't get the specifications that we were hoping to see for you to be able to give that review. What was submitted is here on the bottom of the page. You can see it's conceptual pavilion. They didn't have the plans approved and so we would like some guidance from the planning commission on how you would like, if you're comfortable with the plans as they're submitted and we believe they've been able to address most of our staff comments, so we would ask that you approve, subject to all staff comments, all the other plans. But if you're, with this pavilion, there's a couple of things you could do. You could say come back with just the pavilion architecture and you could review that separately if you wanted to approve the plans as others they are today. Or you could ask that the pavilion be reviewed by staff or I think there's probably some other options that aren't coming to me right now, but just to fulfill the requirements of the ordinance, that the planning commission review all these structures and move things along, we did want to mention that to you. I think the, the, the other, the other comments are mostly prior to permit comments and so we just make sure to tidy up the plans before they get permitting. So if you did approve it, subject to all staff comments, staff would feel as comfortable being able to address all the other comments that you have before you. Do you have any questions for me for this project?
Can I ask one thing regarding the visitor parking? Is that all the, is it all parallel spaces that we see kind of scattered throughout or is that the visitor parking?
It's mostly parallel, but not all. Here's a little pocket of 90-degree visitor parking.
Oh, okay, along the...
There's a little pocket. You can see some parallel spaces in front of the unit. And then parallel spaces on the private road. Let me go to the next page. Parallel, Road D still has the parallel spaces. And then you have them, sorry? This one? Here's some parallel spaces. Oh yeah, I was working my way south. I think I'm working my way south. Oh, here, there they are. It's just three there. So most of them are the parallel spaces, but some of them are the, along the drive on the west side are 90-degree spaces.
And then in the amenity areas?
Yes.
Basically. Okay. And I definitely can see the difference in the elevations of each of these attached buildings. They look very nice. Thank you.
And I do have elevations if you'd like me to go to them, so. These are facing the alley.
Mm-hmm.
Fronts. Hard to distinguish the difference, I guess, after a while. They all are different, I promise.
Mm-hmm.
Seven elevations, six colors, 42 other houses.
Very nice. What other comments or questions regarding, we're looking at final design and site plan review? And I think the main question, if you're good with what we're looking at there, is in regards to the gazebo and fireplace and whether we want to call for any additional staff review for that area.
I think I'd like to see the pavilion once there was a real drawing of it. To me, that pavilion picture is kind of basic for as nice as the development's going to look.
Other comments or opinions on that?
Minimum of the staff doing it, so if you want us to do it, it'd be fine.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or are we ready for a motion?
Ready for motion. So Sean, are you...
Asking if they had any ideas for the pavilion when you said it was basic, so I was just trying to see if they had anything. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm telling you, Rob Mulch and SEC. We submitted some contractual details to Margaret Ann on Monday. I don't know if you got that. Matt sent you that email on Monday in regards to, oh, whatever you want. So Margaret Ann has...
Holiday, Rob.
That's right, you're all off. Some of us worked. But yeah, so we, Matt emailed a construction drawing that Mr. Michael Burton with Toll Brothers brought to us on Monday and we sent it on to her for review on that side. So we do have a contractual plan that he has presented at that point in time for her for review on that side, so that has been submitted. But we're open to if it's...
Does it look more similar to this or is it, is it different from this?
It looks very similar to that and we'd be happy to work with Margaret Ann's staff on working on the situation.
If you want, I could pass my phone around.
Because I think we're saying we, we hope it's maybe a step up.
Okay. I've got a picture, I've got a picture if you want me to pass it around.
Yeah, pass your phone around. You want us to text anybody while we're having it?
Tell Misty I said, "Hey, tell his wife what's up."
Yeah.
So even if, they probably did email me something, but even so, the way the ordinance is written, it's something the planning commission should review, so we would want you to opine upon maybe the structure and if you'd like that to come back to you or if you want to shift the review to another, another responsible party.
So Sean, are you wanting to see it or you want to let Margaret Ann work it out?
We'll let them work it out, that's fine.
I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments and then working the pavilion and fireplace area with staff.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we are moving on to Plats and Plans. Our first item there is TDT Productions, the site plan for approximately 900-square-foot artisan distillery zoned CH located at 502B South Manny Avenue. JH Corp., developer. Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, commission. This item that's coming before you, you might scratch your head and ask, why is it coming before you? You may recall a couple months back, our legal team had worked with staff and council's direction and new policy for what we call artisan distilleries, artisan breweries and artisan wineries. This one before you is the very first of the ones to come through this process, so we've worked closely with the staff to make sure and our legal department to make sure that we are including and reviewing all particular opportunities. This particular site is at the corner of East Castle and South Manny Street, shown here in the aerial drawing. The applicant actually has been doing business in about a quarter of the building for about five years, but wants to do something different in that particular area. And currently, under our new artisan distilleries, they're defined as a small commercial-use distillery that manufactures no more than 5,500 gallons of finished product containing spirituous liquors or alcohol per month. And that the total floor area for distilling, including bottling and barreling, shall not exceed 3,000 square feet and that accessory activities may include those activities and uses listed in Chart One and Note 29. So staff went ahead and put together a small chart on the top of Page Two here that shows those particular maximums and minimums for ease of review. And so maximum floor area, that 3,000 square feet, we're looking at about a 900-square-foot size. Tenant space, it's really two large rooms. Maximum amount of production, they're looking at only about 2,000 gallons maximum initially, up to 5,000, which is again below the maximum standard. Parking, the way our parking ordinance is written for this, it talks about a minimum of five regardless of what use, but then if they do any other of those uses listed in that item number 29, they would have to meet those additional parking standards as if it was the primary use of the building. So it's kind of compounded rather than how we normally apply parking, but because they are looking at this point really just doing the distilling and bottling and distribution from this site, they would only trigger the five. However, there are about 26 shared parking spaces on the site that are not fully utilized at this point in time. We do have a couple of minimum distances. The code actually talks about, has to be greater than 75 feet from any residential uses. If you look at our use table, it's really only allowed in commercial districts, so not in residential districts, but there is a carve-out in the CCO because there are a lot of areas where there's legal non-conforming uses. And the way our code is written, it doesn't matter if it's an actual use or a zoning, but it still is at that 75 feet, so that is not applicable in the CCO. And then these last two standards really come from another provision of our zoning ordinance that talks about in, I may have to look at Roman to recall the provision section, but other sections outside of our zoning code, but within the city's municipal code talk about being at least 300 feet from a church. The nearest church is 340 feet. And a minimum distance to a nearest school being over 500 feet and here we're at about 1,150 feet away from the school. In looking at the site, you'll notice we've attached, you can see here in, north is actually to the right side of the drawing where Castle Street is, but their front door actually faces Manny Street. So you can see here the portion of the building that they currently take up in those two rooms and then the floor plan that breaks it down, which is needed anyway for plumbing and building department for their permits, just gives you a scale of really all of the mixing and blending would be in the back of the use. And then we asked the applicant to kind of provide a written, you know, what they look at doing for that particular site. And if you'll notice, he does talk about different percentages of distilled spirits, the way that Tennessee state law and federal law work is depending on what your percentage of alcohol level is, whether you're subject to additional permitting and taxation. So you'll notice a unique condition of approval that's just a catch-all, so somebody knows if the planning commission approves it, you're not done. You still need to make sure that you're meeting any of those provisions because even though their initial product is basically in the alcohol range of what you would see a beer, the state still sees it or our ordinance actually still qualifies it as distilling. We don't care what the percentages are from our perspective of ordinance. It's more about, is it a harder liquor? Is it beer or is it wine? So it falls for our ordinance even though it's at those lower levels. So he may not be subject to state permitting if he's distilling at that lower level for that end product, kind of like a Tennessee tea. But if he does go into those higher thresholds, they will be responsible for getting those additional permits as necessary. The other thing that we did want to note on this and we put it in the first condition of approval is should the business wish to add any accessory activities, which are allowed, that they should be allowed to do so as long as they meet the provisions of the zoning ordinance as though such activities were principal use activities on the premises. So again, going back to that list here, you'll see quite a bit of things, including, you know, tours of facilities, tasting rooms, samples, tour of facilities, sale of merchandise, all of those various activities, but all of those activities bring more parking requirements and additional requirements that they would have to meet all the city standards. But I did clarify with our legal, I said, is that what I think I read in the ordinance? That's the intent? And he said, yes, that is the intent. However, all of these artisan breweries, distilleries, wineries will come before the planning commission so that you're aware of where they're being located, the size of them and what kinds of uses are coming through. Staff is working with a couple of other ones that you'll see in upcoming months, so we wanted to use this opportunity to answer any questions because it's been a couple of months since you've seen those ordinances and even yours truly has had at least three tutorial sessions with our legal division to try to understand all of the various provisions. And at the very end, I was surprised, oh, it goes through site plan at the planning commission. So that, that even for those of us who are in it day in and day out, there were some new things that we were learning as well. The applicant, Mr. Douglas, is here. If you have any questions for him, he's been very kind to staff as far as working through being the first, because that means it took us a little bit longer to get him here. So we appreciate that and he's actually just lives a couple of doors down from his business and is really looking at reinvesting into our city with his project. So if you have any questions of myself or the applicant, it's not a required public hearing, but it is required to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission.
Ms. Smith, can you go back to the, I think it said site plan data, the sheet you were...
Yes.
So, I don't know, six line items from the bottom. Distance to nearest church structure is greater than 500 feet. I think that should say greater than 300 feet because it says nearest.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Thank you for catching that. Like I said, it's, it was definitely one of those things that I figured having the table handy was much easier and I think we had even mixed up the churches and the schools at one point and we caught it early, but didn't catch it there. And we can have the applicant update that in the paperwork.
So Ms. Smith, are you saying in that, the page we've looked at the most with the zoning city code requirements and then the section from Chart One in Note Number 29, all of those items listed in Number 29 are activities and uses that they can do in these specific listed breweries? So, but if he's going to add any of those, he has to come back for approval to add any of them because it affects the parking?
He just has to come back to staff for reviewing of the parking and making sure those additional activities are, that he has enough room for those.
Okay.
So for example, if there's four tenants in the building, somebody decides to leave a portion of the building and says, oh, I finally have room a year later or six months later, I can do more, then we can say, okay, more parking's a... Then we can say, okay, more parking's available, you know, and again, he's limited to no more than 3,000 square feet. So he could never at any point under these provisions, take over the entirety of the building, but he could potentially take up to that 3,000 foot mark. But when we look at site plan, site plans are specific to the area and the use. If you change the use or you change, that's why we wanted to make sure to put it in writing here to basically say so long as you have those activities. So it would be a staff level review, just like we would a change of use site plan.
Okay. Still, very nice, room for growth.
Any other questions?
Questions?
If there are none, I move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Going through. Very exciting.
I just want to add, Madam Chair, that, that, you know, we've started seeing a number of these come before us. Um, I think we have one that's been submitted that you'll be seeing next month. And, and all the folks that are, that are, that are proposing those businesses, they're, they're predominantly, um, small local business people who, um, are really, really happy about the opportunity to, to start these types of businesses and they're really, really excited about it. And so far, they've just been a joy to work with. So we, we continue to look forward to, to seeing more of them come before us.
Did they give you beer so you'd say that?
No, no beer.
Light survey.
Yes, we'll go out and check it out before the next.
Does the metering come through yet?
No, not yet. In fact, we, we asked, um, I think the last guy that we talked to, we asked, have you heard anything from the, the metering guy, but nothing yet.
He better bring one of those Viking ads.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. We'll schedule public hearings on these items. The first thing we have is a zoning application for approximately 9.8 acres located along the east side of Agri Park Drive to be rezoned from CH to PRD. It's Arden at Murfreesboro PRD. FC Murfreesboro LLC is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So this portion of the agenda is new business. Uh, where our staff is asking for you guys to schedule a public hearing. This first item is for a rezoning from a property that is currently zoned commercial highway. And the request is to rezonate to a planned residential district to allow for the development of a, uh, senior, uh, age restricted, 55 plus independent living apartment complex for 166 residential units. It is located along the east side of Agri Park Drive, north of Old Fort Parkway. Uh, the proposal is for, um, a four-story building. It includes 136 units in this main building. It also includes, uh, 15 cottages that are two units per cottage for a total of 30 units. Uh, the four-story buildings, the, uh, individual units would be either one or two bedrooms. Uh, they would range in size, um, it's quite a lot of variance, but from 670 square feet up to 1,400 square feet in, in floor area. And then the cottages would be each 1,200 square foot in floor area. Uh, also proposed are 198 parking spaces, which includes parking inside of five, uh, individual garage buildings. Those buildings are detached from the main structure and are located along the east side of the property. Surface parking includes 163 spaces plus additional ADA accessible spaces. Go to this site. There's a, quite a variety of amenities that's proposed with this project, um, something that we don't normally see with apartments, uh, let alone for seniors. Uh, interior amenities that are, um, included in the program book include having the two elevators, uh, controlled building access, so there would be security on site at all times. The first floor would include a community dining room, which would be for meal service if the resident wishes to utilize this amenity. They do have their own small kitchen within each of the units, but sometimes you want to have a larger gathering for your family, or sometimes you want to eat with all your neighbors. And so there's a community dining room area. Um, there's also a library, a pet washroom and individual storage units. So interior to this building, they'll actually have storage closets where you can store your Christmas decorations and such. Um, second floor includes a fitness center, a wellness meditation center where they would also have like yoga classes, a craft business center, which is a room where they'd have computer, um, access, wifi access, uh, for use of the residents. There is a pub game room and a balcony that's overlooking the pool and courtyard areas. The exterior amenities you can see on the site plan include, uh, two pickleball courts, a pool house and a pool, uh, outdoor grilling station, a event lawn space, a fireplace, fire pit area with seats, a dog park and, um, a walking trail that goes around the detention ponds, um, that'll be paved for the seniors. So the overall site design, you can see that there are two driveway access off of Agri Park Drive. Uh, the main building is sighted in the, in the middle of the property in front south of Agri Park Drive, while the two, um, unit cottages are located along the north and south ends of the property as shown on this, on this site plan. The building design, um, there are several buildings. So the first one is the main building. See if I can find a rendering. So as indicated, it is a four-story building. Um, it's predominantly cementitious siding. There is brick located along the entrances and as you can see along the first floor of the front facade. Along the rear and side facades though, um, it is all cementitious siding. That is one of the comments that staff's asking the commissioner to take into consideration. We have asked the applicant to increase the amount of brick area. Um, and an, an easy way to do that would to create the base of the building by having brick be the main, um, material for the first floor to provide that accent material. But that is something that we are wishing that you could discuss today and give them some direction. Each of the, uh, units will have, um, outdoor covered balcony space. So there is that outdoor private space. Um, there's a variety of the wall plane as it bumps out into a kind of a H-shaped building shape. Um, there's parapets and, um, actually there's no parapets. There is, uh, dormer windows on the top floor as well as a, a gabled roof along the front entrance. So this is another view of the front. And this is a view of the sides. So the cottage buildings you can see here in this rendering are one-story. Um, they do have covered front porches. These are also cement siding. Um, and you see the gabled roofs and, uh, there's a brick veneer that is along the, the bottom, creating that base along the sides of those buildings. And the back of the building is a pool house that you can see in this rendering. Um, it is one-story. It's, uh, architecture materials to match the main building. It'll house like restrooms or changing room areas. Um, and there's also some pavilions or, um, uh, arbor areas that are covered adjacent to the pool. So utilities on the property, the solid waste is a little unique. We've seen this in some other proposals, but, um, none that I'm aware of that's actually been constructed. Um, so they would have a garbage chute located inside of the, um, each floor. So the residents can take their trash down to the chute. The chute then goes down into a garbage room. And within the garbage room is a trash compactor that'll compact the trash. The service, um, that the, that the facility will also provide is valet service. So, um, could provide assistance with getting the trash to the chute for the residents if they need be. Um, but the valet service will be emptying out the trash compactor and taking all the trash then out to the exterior, uh, where there is trash enclosures for a third-party commercial hauler to haul away the trash. Murfreesboro Water Resources will provide both water and sanitary sewer services. Um, this particular project had exceeded the amount of sewer that would be allowed under our sewer allocation ordinance. And they have applied for and gotten approval from the city council for an exceedance to sewer. So they have gotten their sewer variance for that. Uh, the exceptions requested, uh, by the applicant for this project includes, uh, one for the building height and, um, number of stories. So allowed by the ordinance, if you compare this to a typical apartment, uh, zoning district, uh, would allow for 45 maximum height and three stories. Their building is being proposed at 65-foot height and four stories. So that is one of the exceptions. The reason, and the applicant's representative's here today so he can explain a little more, so I don't want to put words in his mouth, but, um, for the program book, it does state that the reason why they're asking for that is to allow for more amenities. By allowing the building to go up, it gives them more room for the interior and the exterior amenities. And they felt that that was a good offset for the exception that's being requested. A second exception is for the parking. Parking, if you based it on our, our parking ordinance, would require 280 spaces. They are proposing a total of 198 spaces plus, uh, handicap spaces. And this includes the parking that's inside the garage as well as the surface parking. And so we asked for some justification and they provided us information in a memorandum that's attached to the staff report where, um, the, let's see if I have that information. So the memorandum was prepared, um, and based upon the Parking Generation Manual, Fifth Edition, that's prepared by the Institution of Transportation Engineers or ITE. And what they, uh, what that manual does is it analyzes all kinds of things for transportation engineering, but one of them is parking and parking needs based upon land use. And so when you look at a land use, um, parking for a senior living facility, for independent living, it's a much more reduced number of parking spaces. So they don't have the number of cars that would be needed as if it was for a regular apartment complex that would house families. And so based upon that manual, the manual shows that it would be, 102 parking spaces would be the minimum needed for the 166 units that they're proposing. So they are proposing 198, which is 96 stalls more than, than what would be the minimum per that manual. But it is less than what our zoning ordinance is, so that is something for discussion. So in terms of adjacent zoning and land uses, um, the surrounding area is, is a mixture. Uh, it's mostly in the city, some of it's in the county. Uh, to the north, northwest and east, the properties are zoned RM16 and primarily developed with apartment complexes. The properties to the west, south and southwest are zoned CH. Um, the surrounding land uses are apartments to the northeast and east. And to the west of the property is a mulch facility and vacant land, and to the south is vacant land. And southeast of the property is Sam's Club. The future land use map does show this as auto-urban commercial, so apartment would not go with, um, would not be considered consistent with an auto-urban commercial. When we were going through the studying for, um, the proposed changes to the future land use map, uh, what we kept seeing and kept getting inquiries about is this particular area going to more residential and not commercial. And so following staff study, we did propose with the future land use map update, um, that's under, underway, that this, uh, particular property be considered for, um, auto-urban residential, so AUR. So with that being said, um, purpose again is to schedule this for a public hearing. Staff is supportive of the project. We are asking for a February 1st public hearing date. And Rob Mulchen, who is the representative for the applicant, is here. If he has, um, he can, he can provide any answers to questions that you may have him, or I can help with any questions as well. Thank you.
So I have one. Out of the 166 units, and you may have addressed this, how many of them are two-unit? How many of them are two-bedroom units?
Or three-bedrooms.
Or more.
Okay, Woodley, I'm here with Arden, senior lady. Uh, it's about a 50/50 split. But when you look at a typical resident, uh, of our building compared to an apartment building, a typical apartment building will have 1.9 residents per unit. Our typical building of ours is 1.1. Our, our typical resident is a early seventies, uh, widow female. So even though they are two bedrooms, it's a typical one resident per unit on average.
The math doesn't work.
I'm sorry?
The math doesn't work, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I think we put in a table, I think maybe on, you might be able to go to it comparing a typical apartment building.
Right. No, I get what you're saying. I'm just saying, if, if you didn't have that justification, the math doesn't work in reference to parking spaces. But if you're saying that the majority of these people that will be in two, a two-bedroom unit, uh, is only going to be one person.
That's right.
Then I get it.
Yeah.
And are there any three-bedroom units or are there one or two?
Just one and two-bedroom, yeah, yeah. All the cottages are, uh, all two-bedroom. 1,186 square feet, about 1,200 square feet.
My question was for staff and that's, what have we done in the past as far as, uh, the parking is concerned with senior facilities? So have we given, uh, approval for parking for the senior facilities? And if you don't have the answer, then just make sure when you come back that we do have something to talk to on that.
I don't have that off the top of my head. Adams Place. Maybe Matthew?
Yeah.
I think, you know, there, there are different, um, there are different types of facilities in our zoning ordinance. There's assisted care living facility, there's homes for the aged, and we don't really have a category for just senior independent living or, or active adult independent living, you know, all the, all the different kind of buzzwords of the industry. And when it comes down to it, like our, our ordinance treats these like just apartments, um, because they are apartments, they're just restricted to 55 and up, and they have some amenities that aren't offered at traditional multifamily developments. So when we're comparing them from a parking standpoint, we're looking at how do they compare to our multifamily standards? And I believe that's what Ms. Rush did in this instance. But I think what they're, what they've done is provide some information that, that says that, hey, given our experience in this, in this market, your traditional multifamily parking requirements would way overpark this type of facility.
That's right. Um, we, uh, we have one of these facilities up and running in Myrtle Beach. It's parked the same way. It's probably slightly overparked. We would rather not have a C, a parking. Uh, we own four, um, what you would deem as traditional senior housing, um, in line with Harmony and Victory Station. It goes from independent living to memory care. You park those on a much less, um, though, but you have much more staff parking because there's probably 30 people working in those places. So, um, in addition to this one, we have nine other of this similar product throughout the southeast. Um, and so from the, the research that we've done, this is kind of right in the wheelhouse of, of parking and probably slightly overparked. Like I said, we, we would rather not build parking that's just not going to be used and, and provide much more outdoor amenity space.
Question, how are those parking spots like allocated? Is, you know, is there some kind of method we should like keep up and like one person can't have 10 and another person have one?
Yeah, I mean, typically in the lease, if you come in, you're kind of allocated one, one space. The, the garage is on our first, first come, first served basis. Um, and then, you know, depending on if you, if you need a second space, will we charge for those? Most likely not. We, this is a middle market product and, and I'm happy to kind of go into what that is. But, um, we're not going to charge for parking at this time, except if you want the garage.
Is it gated?
No, not gated, no. No.
Or have you guys, I know you've, you've got that research paper showing that's appropriate.
Sure.
Amount, but like, you know, what if every, you know, suddenly 70-year-olds all want their own car?
If they come in with three cars?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we just want a lot, yeah. If somebody comes in, if somebody comes in and they want...
I wonder if you get all 55-year-olds instead and...
Yeah. I'll bear...
That would be, it'd be a happening apartment.
My dad's 65. He has a lot of cars.
Yeah. I mean, as much as we say it's 55-plus, like I said, the average age in these, these buildings is, is 70, 72.
Looks great. I'm ready.
Getting younger every day.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's really...
70 sounds younger, yeah. The closer I get to it.
Independent living facility day, which has three meals a day, that average age 15 years ago was, was where this is. Now you go in those buildings today, it's 82, 83. And they're seeing that acuity creep where it just, it gets older and older and older. And this is kind of the new ground where we try to keep the monthly rate down as much as possible. And if you need some in-home care, we have partnerships. You know, like I said, we have four of these in Charlotte. We've got a great relationship with Atrium, which is a big hospital network. If we were to come here, we would try to do the same thing with, with Vanderbilt. Um, you know, nurse practitioners, Medicare Advantage plans. nurse practitioners, Medicare Advantage plans. But if you don't need those services and you just want to be in the community, then you just pay the monthly rate.
So each unit gets one spot, and then at least, and then you figure it out?
Correct, correct.
And we'll continue to review that parking information between now and the public hearing. We hear your concerns on that, on that front.
Because I think, you know, it's per unit, so you know, what if you end up doing 75% two-bedroom instead of, you know, I mean, it's still the same parking versus, I know you don't want to do that in this building, but I'm just saying that, the calculation.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I know you guys are going to be shocked to hear that I'm not bringing up the parking issue, because you guys have done a great job. This is a big building, like...
Tall.
This is tall, like 10 feet too tall, you know?
Yeah, I know she mentioned 65 feet. It's not 65 feet, so if you look at, look at the elevations, it's a four-story building, but that roof line is really 42 feet, and then it goes to a roof well. And so it's really, the majority of that building is probably 50 feet tall. And then we actually, for aesthetic reasons, we put the condenser units, was the air conditioning units, on the roof, as opposed to seeing them on the ground. So it, I agree, it's a four-story building, but it's not, it's not 65 feet. The majority of that building is probably 50, 50 feet.
So you're saying the living space itself is 50 feet?
The living space to the, you know, fourth-floor ceiling will be 42 feet. All the ceilings are roughly, you know, 10 and change feet tall.
Well, to the neighbors, I don't think they care what part's being lived in. I mean, that's just a really big footprint on a really tight road. I don't know. I'm going to drive by it. I don't think when I looked through the pattern book the first time, I realized how massive of a structure it was going to be.
There are some adjacent apartments, too.
Yes, to the east are three- or four-story apartments, I was taken. And the other thing about this, sorry, Rob Mulchen, S E C, the property is currently zoned CH. And CH allows for a building to be 75-foot tall. So in regards to our discussions with staff, we're comparing this to the RM16, because staff felt that the better comparison versus CH was to look at it from RM16, because we're looking at a residential component versus potentially a business or office or something along those lines. So the comparisons that you see in regards to our exceptions we're asking for in regards to the height and stories is related back to the RM16, which this property's not actually zoned. We were just doing it from a comparison standpoint. So technically speaking, in regards to architecture and looking at the architectural elevations that we provided on page 11, as Kevin was saying on that side, that, you know, the building itself is going to be roughly, the actual top of, when you measure it based on how the zoning ordinance measures heights of buildings in that regard, with the type of roof structure we have on there, we're actually roundly, roughly, it would be in that 51 to 52-foot tall height in regards to the roof itself. So in regards to it being zoned CH today and allowance of 75 foot, we're actually 20-some more feet less than what the current zoning on the property is. But in relationship to looking at it from an RM16 standpoint, we're asking for the variance to be 55-foot, and so we're asking for a 10-foot exception if it was compared to RM16 zoning, which we're actually not zoned RM16 or zoned CH. So that's where we're kind of, maybe that, the height disparity might be off on that.
I also think, if the cable department could put up my computer onto the planning commissioner's screens, just to provide context...
What are they talking about?
Of the adjacent multifamily uses. I think, I could be mistaken, but I think all three of those complexes are three-story, three-story complexes.
With the screen is on now, where is the 65 feet? Because I'm kind of confused on where you're saying it's going to be 65 and where it's going to be 50.
Pull it up real quick here.
While there's dead time, thank you for the clarification, because I was, I was in the same boat as Ms. Everwater, it just seemed really tall. But I have another concern while they're looking at that, this is more staff-related than they are. The valet service for the trash, we've had discussions about that valet-type stuff going forward. What kind of alternatives do we have to valet if valet ends up going away or something like that?
Well, I think the difference here is that the other project you're talking about, it was total valet from the door all the way to like an exterior compactor, exterior facility. This is going to have trash chute, so I think the only purpose of the valet is to take it a few doors down, from the front door down the hallway to the trash chute, if the person's unable.
That's right, I'm sorry.
And then our building engineer, our onsite staff takes the compactor out to the dumpster. The valet is just in the building, they put it outside their front door.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clear, thank you.
So as I brought up here, I'm building up the elevation on the main building itself on that side, so you can see in regards to the heights itself, the roof apex two is actually the main roof pitch, the top of the actual structure. But in way regards to the actual, in regards to the actual four-story element, you can see, as Kevin said, you're roughly at about 40, 42 feet of height to the top of the, where the gutter line would start at the bottom of the roof pitch on that side. And then you're going up to about 49-foot to the top of the pitch there. But that's not technically how roof, you know, heights are actually measured in regards to how the zoning ordinance on that side. So you actually come halfway to these peaks on that side. So in regards to that type maximum height, that's why we're asking for the variance to be 55-foot, because we're going to be somewhere in that 50 to 55-foot height in regards to actually measuring as per the zoning ordinance on that side. So we're only asking for, if you're, again, comparing it to RM16 and apartments, we're asking for a 10-foot variance and not a 20-foot variance, as has been stated in the staff report. We made that request to change that before the staff, right after the staff report went out, so.
So I get that, but where is the 65-foot coming in at?
There is not. It's 55.
Okay, that's what I want.
Maybe that center section, the center section over the entryway, is that, because that's much higher than the rest of the building.
So you're, so this roof apex two right here, which is at 59.2, carry that across, that would be...
That's that roof.
There it is, okay.
But again, your maximum roof, your actual technical roof line would be measured halfway up the structure on that side. So that's why we're asking for only 55-foot, because that would adhere to the zoning ordinance on that side.
So in this, this picture that we're looking at on the screen right now has the brick all the way around the bottom.
And as point of clarification, this is one of the things we work with, as the staff report is being generated, the elevations that we have in this book here that you have today, it shows a color rendering on the front on that side as being all brick, but the actual black and whites that you see on the other pages, let me zoom out here and pull back. The actual rest of the first floor, of the first story, I should say, is actually brick all the way around. So it just is not colored like the other representation on the front. So we do have a full one-story brick facade base to this building on that side, and then three floors of cementations, lap siding or board and batten, as you see on the fourth story, to kind of create some differentiations between the base and cap, kind of feel it in regards to the design standards on that side. But yes, this is fully one-story of brick all the way around the main building. And the cottages have a water table, brick water table on the, all four sides as well.
Any other questions or comments before we set a public hearing? And I believe February 1st will be the date we're looking at.
If there are none, I'll make a motion we set up a public hearing for February 1st.
Second.
Motion and seconds all around. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Our next item is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding amendments to Section 34 floodplain zoning. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. And welcome, Ms. Jennifer Knopf.
Knopf.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you here presenting today.
Good afternoon. The item on this agenda concerns making amendments to Section 34 of the floodplain ordinance in order to adopt new maps and make miscellaneous changes as recommended by the state. New maps were recently revised with the re-studied portions of the Stones River watershed. On November 9th, 2022, the city received the letter of final determination from FEMA stating that new maps will become effective on May 9th, 2023. And the city has until then to adopt them into their ordinance. In addition to adopting the new maps, FEMA has made recommendations to include other miscellaneous changes that include adding some language that will give the city authority to regulate localized flood hazard areas that are not identified by FEMA on the flood insurance rate maps. These community identified flood hazard areas are areas the city has historically identified as flood-prone areas during the development review process, such as areas in the Zone X and basins covered by a local drainage study. The updates to the floodplain ordinance will be made to Section 34 of the zoning ordinance since it is the state's requirement that the city adopt the new maps into their ordinance by May 9th. The staff is recommending a public hearing be scheduled on February 1st, so that we can stay on track to meet this deadline.
Anybody have any specific questions for Ms. Knopf regarding this proposed amendment? Or would you rather read it all before the public hearing and then be ready with your questions?
No. I'll move to set the public hearing for February 1st.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, our next item is an annexation petition in Plan of Services for approximately 146 acres located along Highway 99, south of Clear Ridge Drive. The City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Let's see if I can get to a map. There's one. All right. Thank you. The proposed annexation is out in the Rockvale area. The study area is a total of 146 acres, includes a segment of Highway 99 right-of-way for approximately 0.68 of a mile. Also includes the Rockvale Elementary School property site that's located to the northwest of Highway 99, as well as the Rockvale Middle and High School property located along the south side of Highway 99. We've been talking about this project quite a bit. Some of the initial feedback I'm getting from staff during the Plan of Services study is the request to include the entirety of the Rockvale Middle and High Schools. So I wanted to pose that question to the Planning Commission. Staff would like to recommend that we include that area, and that would become part of the legal notice then. The property is contiguous to the city limits, as you can see to the north, along Highway 99, where it touches, not touches, but just south of Gladstone Lane. The study area is located within, primarily within the city's urban growth boundary for the portion that is Highway 99 and the Rockvale Middle and High Schools. The elementary school, however, is outside the urban growth boundary. The purpose of the annexation, we are studying the area after further thought, since the Ferrari property was annexed, this was sometime earlier in 2022, whether or not, whether to do or not to do the Highway 99 annexation. And after further study, kind of found and concluded that because it's on the fringe of the city limits, it seems that the city would annex this right-of-way. It is similar to other schools, that are county schools, that are located on the city right-of-way. They are in the city limits. Therefore, if we're to annex this right-of-way, we feel that the schools should also be within the city limits. We're already providing sewer services to these schools. Police and fire are providing first responder services to other subdivisions that are out in this area, so they are already providing services to this general area. The city would not be providing outside-city services to schools in the future, so if a new school was to be constructed by the county, in the county, the city would not be providing sewer services to those schools in the future, unless it was annexed into the city from the get-go. The Plan of Services is under study right now, and we'll be providing that information to the public hearing for the Planning Commission. The action for today is to schedule this item, and we're asking for a February 1st public hearing date for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions, I'm sure you might have some, as well as staff here. Thank you.
So I have a curiosity question, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the city was against annexing Highway 99, one, we were talking about that other development, or am I, what's reversed, what's changed the thought process, or am I mistaken?
No, it's a good question, and for those who are new, this was part of another annexation study in Plan of Services. And the staff, when we were analyzing that, it was very specific to the Ferrari property. And so since that timeframe, several months have transpired, and a lot more discussions have taken place. And so we've looked at this area more as a whole, rather than site-specific to just the Ferrari subdivision, and feel that this is something that we would like to see brought into the city limits.
Thanks for all staff's hard work on this.
We did. It's strange.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll move for approval.
This is personal. I move for a public hearing on February 1st, and it has been seconded, and so all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, February 1st. Staff reports and other business. I'm told we may not have any.
I could call, I could call Mr. Ives if you'd like to see if he has them.
If there is no other business, then we stand adjourned. Thanks very much.